To the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public executive sessions on May 28th, June 9th, and June 11th regarding personnel issues start from approval minutes, April 28, 2015, or make motion to approve the April 28, 2015 board of supervisors meeting minutes as presented.
Second, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the May 26, 2015 board of supervisors meeting minutes as presented.
Second, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Public Works, we have the report, and discussion about Fairview Road.
Yes, I will speak for Ted about Fairview.
Okay.
So, um...
Could change after today.
He was wondering if it would be possible for us to contract out a contractor for a paver and an operator at a day rate. Steve would quote the day rate, hopefully within the next couple days, they would plan on digging out first, but they said laying all that blacktop by hand is too much. So, they were trying to see if it was possible to contract for a paver and operator to try and fix up and patch up Fairview.
You have given quotes, someone else can call us. Yeah, that's a problem. We can understand a call.
Okay, so yes before them?
Yeah. Okay, Fire Department, let's see, we're here in Westwood. Yeah, to say they're sure they're a bit more immediate things they're doing. But the statistics and everything are part of that. Citizens by request, this is Croft.
Wow, it's not even 6:30.
That's slow, it's like 6:30 too.
Oh, alright, let me have a look. I'm gonna try this. You're not coming out very good in the back. Okay, my name's Siti, and that's not on.
Here, here.
You're aware.
We have to turn it on.
My name's Siti, and I ask for, who? Citizens by request.
You're right underneath the speaker.
Yeah, you're right under the speaker.
Oh, is that, okay, so it's, okay. So, there were four things tonight. One of them had to do with the peddler's license that I brought up a couple, I don't know, maybe a month or so ago, and I have the ordinance with me, and the thing that it doesn't say is exactly the criminal background portion. I think the main thing about having the peddler's license has to do with pedophiles or criminals. And 13-103 simply says his previous criminal record, so it doesn't like say how you verify the criminal record. It's not like attached to anything specifically, right? Like, I know that one time I got a peddler's license years ago, and I was asked to pull a report, and I found online for $10, I think it was PA State Police, and Harrisburg has an online service, but it's not very specific in here about how somebody's supposed to give their criminal record. And I was just thinking that maybe we needed to tighten the language a little bit, and then it's not really clear, like, how long it's good for, because like, let's say you have Jack and Jill, because I think they're peddlers in the area, and each year they might start back up again. So, do they need to get another report the following year? Or let's say somebody is seasonal, and they only come a couple times, so they pull a permit just for a week or a month, but then they come again in the same year? So, is it like, you know, every 12 months they have to renew with the criminal check? And I just think it needs to say specifically what they have to do to show their criminal history, like where they have to go, or what kind of report they have to give. So, I was just thinking that maybe we need to tighten that up, and also include if there's any type of review for pedophiles. I don't know if that's one in the same, if that report is the same in the criminal report. I don't know how that works, do you? Would you know?
Usually, Megan's Law is different. Megan's Law is mandatory reporting, that's public record.
So then, that, it wouldn't necessarily be in a criminal report?
I'm not, I think it should show up in both places, but, yeah, I think you're thinking of Megan's Law, which is a public, public report, and you can go on and find out anyone who's been, it was a Megan's Law offense.
Okay, so then we should maybe put into the resolution, or make a resolution for that, to say that Megan's Law would be reviewed, and that which, which particular criminal investigation reports are acceptable for the township? Because it's not saying anything, it's just basically saying, like I read, "His previous criminal record." What does that mean? Every person desiring to engage in peddling in the town should be, these fellow fields shall first make application, blah, blah, blah. Under this part, address his previous criminal record. Well, what does that mean to address his previous criminal record? And whose responsibility is it? Is it ours, or is it theirs? Everybody's looking at me like, it's like, yeah, are you like saying, yeah?
Ours, you mean, ours or theirs meaning?
Meaning...
Or the report.
Yeah, who gets the report? Do we get the report? And if we don't get the report and they do, what report's acceptable? I mean, they could just say, "Well, no, I'm fine, I'll get my neighbor to sign a letter that says that I'm of good character," because it's just saying, "His previous criminal record."
I wish Chief Porter was here tonight. I don't know the exact nuts and bolts on how that works. I'll be honest with you, I don't.
Yeah, you have a criminal background search that's going to catch the criminal offenses, which you have to do a search for, but those same offenses that would be a Megan's Law offense are going to be in a criminal background search, but they're also available, so if anybody wanting to verify or check, it's a public record.
Okay, but are we checking, or do they pull the report and give it?
I believe they pull the report and submit it to us, or they're supposed to submit one with the peddler's license application, and I believe we give a copy of the peddler's license application and a copy of the criminal background check to the police department.
Right, but in the, in the ordinance, it's not saying any of that.
No, I thought I was...
Does the ordinance need to reflect that, or is it something that can be given credence when they come to the window to ask? Like, does it need to specify to the ordinance, or is it something that the office takes care of?
Tony, is the chief, after he receives the report, is he saying something back to the office at approval?
Not that I'm aware of, I'm very new to the peddler's process, though. I know that when people come in, they've handed us criminal background paperwork. I haven't really reviewed many of them yet, I just know that we forwarded on to the police, but I'm not sure what they do with it from there, whether they verify from their own checks, I'm not sure.
I would think we would want to pull the report if it's no problem for the chief to pull the report ourselves versus someone submitting possibly something that's not accurate. So, I'm sure they can pull it really quick, I mean, was anyone online to pull it?
Yeah, well, they pull it from any new hire and all that, so it's not, not a major thing for them to pull it, that is just...
Police do pull a more comprehensive report, too. I think they get what's a multi-state report.
So, does it need to be addressed in the ordinance, and we leave the ordinance alone?
Well, that's, that's a matter of policy of how it's implemented. Without having the ordinance, I'm not looking at what...
Do you want to see it?
If you want, but it's a matter of policy of how it's implemented, and what our procedures are in implementing that, and what the application, we have the application that submitted, what we do with it once it's submitted.
Well, the application itself doesn't, doesn't say anything about the background check. There's not, there's nothing filled in about that.
Not in the actual...
There's no blank.
Not in the actual application, no.
Are there directions for it, that's it?
The ordinance is attached.
And that's what I'm saying, in the ordinance, it doesn't specify who's pulling it, just that it simply says, "His previous criminal record, excepting minor traffic offenses."
Well, there's nothing prohibiting Detention from doing what it needs to do to verify.
Okay, so it's just a matter of an internal policy with having Chief Porter do it?
Yeah, we can put a policy in place where, you know, they can still submit what they're doing, but Chief Porter would definitely have to pull the report himself and do a comparison, you know, just to make sure it's accurate.
Yeah, and send any written pool...
To the office.
To the office.
Yeah, as long as it's written down somewhere, because administrations change, and this kind of thing with people coming in and out, it's just, yeah, you got it.
Would they need written permission from the applicant saying that the police can run their background check? Or can police just run background checks on anyone?
My understanding, and we've talked to the chief about it, brought it up, but my understanding is stake of fraud is part of any investigation, they can run a background check.
Okay.
You're not asking, you're not asking for the person. The individual, when they submit, we're asking them to submit the information as a part of a background search, but they don't have to give permission from the chief to...
Okay.
Okay, thank you. There was something that I came across, that this is just a point of information, it's called Exact Time. It's a time tracking for job site and mobile crews on a GPS system. So, if we have mobile crews, and we need to be maybe a little bit more aware of where people are at different times, this system might, I mean, it talks about how much money they save when you're on a GPS system, and when you clock in, and when you go to a different job site or different things, so it may be something for the different crews to, when I say crews...
The only issue with that is that it has to be agreed upon in collective bargaining.
Right.
So, and right now, we're in the middle of the road crew, and the police already have theirs, so, but it's a, it's something we've talked about before, but it has to be agreed upon with the unions, so.
Got it, okay.
I brought it up, I guess, the first year in office, and, you know, there is places that they do have GPS in the vehicles, like Downingtown, Downingtown is GPS for, you know, leaving the police cars, you know, so there's, I mean, every private corporation out there, you know, Comcast, they're all GPS vehicles, so I'm a big fan of things being GPS powered. As Steve pointed out, it has to be negotiated, I mean, currently, we're in the Public Works Department doing contracts, so.
Well, this is, so in other words, people coming in, like, reporting in in the morning, instead of having a time clock where people punch in, that has to go through collective bargaining to have basically a time clock system? That's what this is, it's...
Because it's involved with being able to track them.
Got it, okay, just an idea, we tossed around before. The third thing, we've been talking about liquid fuels, and I think Tag said something a couple, maybe the last meeting, about how they're getting ready to increase possibly the allowance, but what occurred to me is how, when was the last time we actually did our own internal audit of the streets that we're caring for, like, road by road, and actually make sure that what they're paying us from the state, we're getting the right amount of money? Has, did Gary Barak by any chance look at the liquid fuels account to see that? You understand what I'm saying, right? Because we get paid, we get paid basically by mile.
Yeah.
Right, and I don't think we've ever discussed having an audit internally to see if it matches what, what they're doing with the state liquid fuel.
I don't remember, I mean, I sat in the audience for a lot of Gary, as he sat up here, I don't, I know he hinted at a lot of different things that were going on, I don't remember that, but I do remember there was a road that wasn't documented in the liquid fuel, so yeah, there's probably, there could be other errors where it'd be in the best interest to possibly just to see, make sure everything's being accounted for.
Right, because if it's going to go up, and we're looking for some cash, and we're not getting the roads, all of them, and we could find, even if we found 10% that aren't on there, I mean, I don't know what it would involve, I might, I might be adding...
Or probably Tag verifying, I mean, he could probably get a list of the roads of the states as we have, and the mileage, and...
Well, he mentioned it, he did, he mentioned it was 15, like, 15.4 or something, of which 82, Strasburg Road, Domon Road, those are state roads, and we might get some money on that, which I don't know whether we do or not, but then it would have to probably come into the office, I think, for somebody to take a look at. Like, if he gives us the roads, and we know what's not dedicated yet to be coming on, and we know what that is, then I, would it be something internally, it would be done in the office after he gave her that, or after he compiled all the numbers and that?
Well, yeah, I mean, I would think he would need to go out and just verify the mileage of their non-state roads.
Do you think it's worth it?
Verify the mileage of the state roads, and have all that information, and then compare it to what the state report is. I haven't never seen a state report, so I don't know. I would assume the lists out, root that room.
I don't know if we can make, I mean, I don't know if we can ask Tag with his time to do something like that, that relates.
Yeah.
Is there another way to get it, I mean, do you think it's worth doing it, first of all? Do you think it's worth doing?
Yeah, I think it's worth doing.
So then we just got to get creative on how to get it done. Maybe if we pull the report from them, ask them to send us an audit of what they've got, and then we could check against that?
Yeah, we'd have to see, too, what the procedure would be for finding what they say we have, because it may need a certified, verified, somebody come out and measure every single road for us, and, you know, probably at our cost, I would assume, so we'd have to see what that procedure is as well, which I'm assuming would probably be pretty easy to find out on the state.
Yeah.
PSATs may even know.
Yeah, I mean, if we can pick some money up off of the table, that might be helpful. Okay.
Yes.
And the comp plan is online, and it's audible. You can see it, and you can hear it, so you have the comp plan up, okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Mrs. Croft. Mr. Cochran?
Yeah, I'm Jim Cochran. Are you guys aware of what my question is? No, I don't think, these guys can hear me. I came in here to pay my recycling bill the other day, and I have two properties, and one, I live in, which I don't mind paying that recycling bill, but the other one, that question before, and one of the women back there said, "Really, I don't think I should even, because it's probably not really fair that you pay both." And I think that is the case, so what I'm asking for is relief. I don't mind paying for the one property where I live, the farm property where no one lives, or it's always wasted, whatever, they didn't pick up trash, and I'm paying every year for that, it has been for like the last six or seven years. So, that's what I'm asking for, is relief on the one, on the one property. How would you...
Where's your property, Jim?
2275 and 2265, across the street, one across the street, and...
So, it's a farm across the street that you guys have...
Yeah, the other one, so, 2265, I don't have a property there.
Well, Jim, you've come to ask a good question, I mean, this is something that's being advocated ever since we've, we've started discussing reasons for not being, being relieved of the trash bill, so. Been a couple of different occurrences that we've done there, so this one poses that, you know, the helping the properties not to be used at all, which could fall into play with some other people that have stepped before the board or deceased, you know, it's really coming down to whether we offer relief or exemption for properties that just aren't being used, you know, unless they pay trash. You know, obviously, the obvious question, the answer is, I mean, they're not, they're definitely not generating trash, but they are calculated into the cost and what we do our contracts for. Policy used to be absolute, you know, everyone would pay regardless, that way, you know, it was accounted for in how we hid out the trash, but last year, you know, I think that kind of policy was pierced, you know, with different scenarios, in your scenarios, one that started to come before the board, so. So, here we are.
I mean, of course, the other thing we do is combine the deeds, we don't pay one anywhere.
Yeah.
And I haven't paid for a couple of years, so I don't...
Did they give you the trash bin, too?
I'm sorry?
Did they give you the trash tote?
No, because I never generate it, I never clean over at house containers.
Well, they're supposed to drop one off at your property, you know?
Yeah, but I think because, you know, everybody thinks it's somewhat abandoned, you know?
Do you have a regular trash bin, Jim?
I'm sorry, I have...
Do you have a regular trash bin, do you have, you know, the green tote?
Oh, yeah, yeah, up at the, up at the other part.
At your other property, but this one, this one you're currently talking about, the farm, that one has no totes, right? You don't have recyclable, and you don't have regular, regular trash. And no one dropped off either of those containers for you?
No, really.
Okay.
How long is your...
2265, I've owned 2275 for about 12 years.
And you were 2265?
Property up here for...
You know, we were talking about this, obviously, with the scenario of someone had passed away and the property wasn't being used, and we're trying to think how, Jim, if I met a policy of, would we be notified if someone was on the property? That's really something...
Yeah, somebody would kick in, like, you know, say you sold the property, you know, how would we be aware if that's happened? Do we know the charge? Or someone has passed away and the property's been sold, so that's, I think that's where we're at.
Well, I just, I just sold another property, and I canceled, you know, A.J. Losinski, many people bought the property, called them up, started the service.
Yeah.
So, they get up, that's, that's usually what happens, it's just a little bit of a strange duck.
Yeah, it's how, how...
There's a house on the property.
Yeah, how everything was calculated out, it was just an absolute policy, everyone pays regardless of...
Wait, you said, there is a house on the property, there's not a house on the property?
There's a house on the property, but it's, it's an abandoned house, I mean, there's no electric, no water, this is a historic, old historic property.
Yeah, you live up the street.
So, what, before you bought it, I mean, who's the previous owner?
The backs, the backs, but I'm not sure, we don't have, I mean, that was way before, you know, trash pickup was, is the trash pickup is, was mandatory, has only been forced for like five, six years, you know, so when I bought it, there was no trash service out here.
He said he bought it like 12 years ago?
Yeah. And then I think it was the end of the third year's party.
You're going to consider relief, probably shut up at that hearing and put it off, just to make sure, drop out any obligations there, you don't want to end up in breach.
I said you paid up on it.
He's not paying, so he's not asking for relief, but...
Yeah, future of...
Not being built, so it's really, you're falling, you're looking, I mean, you're just looking...
Muni billing, no?
I assume Detention has the discretion to decide how it goes in, but he's paying, but you probably review that, so.
Just review, you go in your agreements and see. Yeah, and then the other two board members would be here, I mean, but this, 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 example or scenario from Jim really poses the one if someone would be deceased, I mean, so, you know, we've been asked that once, and possibly even again in the future, so we really need to think about answering the question, I mean, this is twice now on that.
Yeah, I think this is more different than the family number dying.
Yeah, that's, it's true, but it's just absolutely no use, I mean, no one's using it, I mean, he's, he lives, he lives on another property up the street, he just happens to own two, this one here is an old, you know, abandoned house, and, you know, he's basically just using the barn, but it's not taking the trash. Which is the same thing in the end, if someone passed away, they're not using it.
Yeah, but that house probably has more of a chance of being used again, or being sold.
With the deceased?
Yeah.
Yeah. The other possibility is the one where he came in, where it was the investor, they bought it and said, "I'm not using it," you know, "No one's living there," and just...
Well, that's a little different, the intent is to go...
But the, the scenario is just no one, they're, yeah, they're making the same argument, "I'm not using," you know, so that's, I don't know what that can open up as a can of worms. But, I mean, he is paying, I mean, what is, he is paying on another property, so he is part of the pool for what he would generate here.
Right.
He just happens to own two, and one is...
Yeah, but the trash service, they didn't bother to drop off the toter either.
Right, yeah, you're actually being charged for something that, there's no service, you have a grievance on that.
But I haven't tried, so, that's the other side of it, too.
Yeah, the tote's not being dropped off, that's not fair, if you're charged.
Yeah, you have no toter anyway.
Yes.
Well, I guess we said, what, we need to see what muni billing, what their policy is? As far as, because otherwise, then it's, when the bill comes in every year, and you have to come in the office and, I've heard, say so, and then the girl's about to contact muni billing and handle all that, and the bill just didn't go out at all, you know, if we go that way, that would be the best case scenario.
Might be a way to like retire a property.
Yeah, the concern then, too, is though, if it, you know, is ever sold or rebuilt on, or whatever, down the road, you know, in general, not necessarily in your, your case, but, you know, highway would know that it's sold...
That's a $60,000 question, I'm not sure why Easfallefield was even be involved in this. I mean, I, you know, I own homes that are different, I own, own homes in my, my county, none of the townships get involved in this, it's up to the resident to, you know, it's a requirement, and the resident goes out and contracts with PFI, or A.J. Losinski, or whoever the heck he wants to.
Yeah, Wes Cowan works like that.
And gets it gone, I would just, I don't even think it'd be a burden on you guys to want to control all of it.
What is it, Cowan has like three choices, or something like that?
Yeah.
Somebody like that, yeah. So, they're involved somewhat, but they give you three choices between, you know, even, but we're also locked in for another...
I mean, I tell you what's an interesting thing, too, you know, to take a step further, which I don't get when it goes on in the state of Pennsylvania, when I'm up at the Triple Fresh Market the other day, and I don't know if you guys have seen the amount of recycling materials that build a trash can up there, so I asked Jim, I said, "Why don't you put a recycling container out here?" And one of the guys working up there, that lives across the street, goes, "We don't have to recycle here." What do you mean, "You don't have to recycle here"? He apparently lives in one of the...
In Easfallefield, he said, "We don't recycle in Easfallefield."
He said, "We don't recycle in Easfallefield," and so, commercial properties, now this guy lives in one of the apartments...
Across the street.
Across the street by the deal, and he says, "Oh, we don't recycle."
So, commercial buildings...
I mean, who's on first? You know, the whole, the whole thing is just...
Well, what is the rule about like a restaurant or commercial building, like an apartment?
They're claiming they don't recycle at all.
I've never heard that, I don't know.
This was like two weeks ago.
And we were shocked, we were like...
I mean, the apartment buildings should have a toter for trash and recycling for each unit.
Yeah, they should have it on those.
That's the way it should be, that's the way that what they're supposed to drop off, so.
Well, that...
That was my, that was my understanding of it.
That was the public perception of the little apartments across from...
Yeah.
There, and Triple Fresh.
Yeah, Triple Fresh is probably a little different in that they probably have the dumpster instead of trash tubbers.
Well, they're less, you know, it's something that everybody should be conscious about going forward, there's...
Yeah.
Yeah, because they, I mean, not, not to pinpoint them, but they do serve a lot of lunches and dinners in the plastic containers that can be recycled, and in all of those, and we love, I mean, we love Triple Fresh, but we just thought there's room for improvement in commercial settings, if that's the way all apartments are run, and all, you know, restaurant-type places.
Yeah, it's a serious concern.
Yeah, we'd have to review and see what the ordinance says.
Yeah, there's, I haven't heard much back from the, from the trash company as far as how they're enforcing recyclables and what's involved. I know other municipalities, they do do that. You know, I just watched a documentary, not to side note it, but just even with plastics, like when there's two types of different plastics received at the recycling company? They won't even bother, because it's, it's no good to them to have...